We do have the joint meeting that's starting at 7:00 PM. So let me officially begin the meeting of the Carlisle Select Board on Tuesday evening, February 1st, 2022. And the purpose of our meeting in this early for this next half hour is so that we can have a chance as a board to discuss what we think we ought to do around a town administrator. And as we all know, we talked to a search firm last week and one of the things that became clear as we were talking to them is that we haven't talked through this enough as a board to be clear about what it is we want to do going forward. So that's the purpose of our, that's the topic for this next, you know, 25 minutes or so. And we should make sure we keep an eye on the time so that we conclude well before seven. Tim, are you, you'll be able to just hold off letting anybody in addition? Well, let's see, how does that work? No, I guess what they would just start joining in as people are, there's no reason people can't just join our conversation midway if they want to.
It's open meeting, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The executive session's different, yeah.
Right, so let's just make sure we can all help each other by keeping an eye on the time to make sure we wrap up our topic, you know, before seven so that Madeline can start the, you've got your, you're muted Kate, but you're gonna, you're gonna give us a timer?
Yes, I'll set on a lar.
Great, so we're not still deliberating when Madeline wants to begin the joint meeting.
Just to make sure that I understand Barney, so you've opened the meeting, that's going to continue to be an open meeting when the planning board starts, but Madeline's going to chair the joint meeting?
Correct.
Got it, okay.
Yeah, and then when the joint meeting ends, when Madeline adjourns that meeting, we're going to stay on and then we will take a motion to go into executive session, not planning to return to open meeting. Yeah. Okay, good, so so our, what we want to discuss tonight then is as a board, we, we are going to be thanking Tim profusely and wishing him all the best at some point in April. And so we have to decide whether we want to hire an interim manager now, and if so, for how long? And then the, and the other question is a permanent town administrator, did I say manager, sorry? A interim town administrator? And/or begin looking for a permanent town manager and a town administrator, sorry. And if you read the memorandum from Tim, which Tim I thought was very helpful and very clear, he walks through what is likely involved in trying to hire a town administrator that would be a permanent town administrator, maybe, Tim, you want to just review that briefly and your, and sort of your thoughts as you laid them out in your memo?
Sure.
That's a helpful starting point.
Yeah, I tried to make the point that I don't think it's a choice between do we hire an interim or do we hire a full-time manager, administrator rather. I think that even if the board tonight were to say, let's hire a full-time town administrator, you're going to have to commit to hiring an interim for a short interval because it's going to take a number of months, maybe four to six or more, to go through a hiring process for a permanent full-time town administrator. I think if all went well, you know, you'd probably have someone ready to assume their duties in September from this point forward. So I recommend that the board, well first, you know, retain a consultant, but that the board ought to retain an interim town administrator for a period of four months or however long it takes to hire a full-time town administrator. And then that process can play out the way it usually does. I think, I mentioned, I think it takes far too long to hire someone in the municipal world. That's just kind of a fact of the way the process works, it'll be a month or two before the position can get advertised in the community profile for the advertisement developed. It'll take a number, another couple of months to receive the resumes and screen them to a reasonable number that a search committee and the consultants could interview. And even if the process goes, you know, exceedingly well, it's going to be another couple of months to get from the semifinalist stage to a recommended finalist to the board of selectmen who, if you make an offer to, is going to have to extricate themselves from wherever they're currently employed, and that's probably going to take a number of weeks, so it could, you know, it could take a number of, it would, would take a number of months, even if we were to commit tonight to this is the process we want to undertake. And I think that still means hiring an interim. But I don't think, I think part of the difficulty, maybe the consultants were having difficulty wrapping their minds around this as well, is that it's hard to find a qualified interim for a period of a year as largely because a lot of the interims are retired managers themselves and are limited in terms of the number of hours they can work and how much they can earn on top of their pensions, so very few people can commit to, you know, a stint of many, many months as an interim. I think there was some thought that the former government might be changing at this town meeting if, you know, the governance task force were to recommend going to a town manager, former government, or a stronger town administrator, former government, I think that remains to be seen. I think even if that happened at town meeting, again, any bylaw change has to go to the attorney general, it would be another six or eight months before that would get approved by the attorney general. So, and that's presuming that, you know, town meeting supports it. A lot of, in a lot of communities, changes in government sort of fail the first time because it's a lot for the community to wrap its head around, but they're usually more successful on the second go around. It seems like that it represents a big change to the community and they're not quite ready to embrace it. And so it could, you know, conceivably be even longer than that, so I don't see sort of holding out, waiting for a stronger position to emerge and then hiring that person down the line. I think, you know, we ought to go forward and get the best candidate we can, we can find and and presumably that person has the skillset to be able to assume greater responsibility and authority and duties if that day, you know, inevitably comes, that they're ready to shoulder that responsibility. So my recommendation to the board is to, you know, to go forward with the process for a permanent full-time town administrator, knowing full well that that does mean we need an interim. And we're going to need an interim, you know, sooner rather than later, we're going to need someone for that gap between April and whenever you do hire someone, maybe it's July 1st and it's just a couple of months, or maybe it's, you know, September 1st or or later than that. So, you know, we don't, don't know exactly how many months it would be, but I do think, you know, the board would, should be looking at, you know, hiring an interim town administrator, and I think with the help of a consultant, and that's another thing the board should talk about is what the, the next step should be there. I think that's kind of a summary, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
So, Tim, what would you?
Please, go right ahead.
Tim, what would you think about, like, if, if we were to contract with the consultants and say, look, we want you full-on hiring a full-time town administrator and as a side thing, look out there and see, is there anybody who can fill in the gap, but not kind of do it in the sequence of find the, find the interim first and then find the full-time person, make it, find us a full-time person, but also look for somebody because we're going to have a gap that we want to fill. That's kind of a secondary thing we need you to do, probably easier to get an interim than it would be to get the full-time, would be my guess.
Yeah, I would agree that they, they could kind of hit the ground running on the full-time search and and they, they have kind of a network of professionals out there, either retired managers or persons between positions for whatever reason, that, that they could, you know, ascertain their level of interest and, and bring them before the board. I think the town of Wayland did this about a week or so ago and they had four, four former managers and they interviewed them for an interim placement there. So that they're, they're, they're ready, they're poised to do that, that, that's sort of not the easy part of the job, or maybe it is. I mean, it is easier to find someone who could fill in for a shorter, shorter time period and not not make a lot of changes, not, you know, kind of keep the, keep the ball moving.
Also, it's a lot easier for us too, right? Because it's less risky, you know, the, the full-time one, we need to really fully vet, make sure there's a great cultural fit, make sure, you know, you know, that we're, that we're getting the right person in.
Right, it would take some, take some pressure off the board, I think, in the intervening months, that, you know, that'd be less, you'd be less involved in the kind of the day-to-day minutia of town government, which I'm sure would make you happy.
Kate or David, do you have some thoughts you want to add or questions, comments?
You know, big thing for me, you know, I, I agree with your process, Tim, and so, I mean, it seems clear that we need an interim, timing is timing. I'm concerned about the statement you made, like an interim would months over a year, I don't know. The process could be, the interim assignment could be as short as two months and as long as a year, so you know, I, I don't know enough about that marketplace to know how you get that, are you going to get a series of interims? So that, I do think, I mean, Nathan said they could sort of do it on the side, but the fact is, you turn into a pumpkin after town meeting and we need an interim, so I, while I agree that it's not really two different searches, that's probably too much. It needs to be a priority to get that person in place with an understanding of, I would think, of a fair amount of flexibility because of the other factors that you mentioned. Now, MRI, you know, they, they sent us a Dear John letter, like, bye-bye, but they made reference to the fact that they have a lot of these people in their stable, but it was unclear from the letter whether they would help us with that. But, I mean, it could be we.
David, can we, can we hold off on that for a second? And let's, let's.
No idea what you're talking about there.
Yeah, I know Nathan, I was going to fill folks in, so.
Nevermind.
Yeah, that's okay, but let's just.
So anyway, all right, I'll wrap up. My point is just, my point is simply that I, I agree with the conclusions, I agree with the comments, I think, you know, identifying what we need in an interim and finding somebody with the flexibility to have a, you know, wide range of time that he or she serves in that position, I think is important and to get locked down quickly, and it doesn't necessarily have to be the same search firm or even a search firm, but we need to, you know, that process needs to start in parallel and not as a sub-priority, in my opinion. Thank you.
Kate, what are your thoughts on this?
Yeah, I, I, thank you, Tim, for your, your memo, I thought it was very well thought out and I agree with all the points and I also agree, I guess, I think, still job one is to get the interim. I mean, even, you know, if we're looking for a search, obviously it sounds, looks like David may have, you know, spoiler alert, but it sounds like we're even looking, still looking for consultants, so we're going to need to have somebody to fill the gap, so if it's just a question of do interim or no interim, I'm clearly on the side of interim.
Yeah, and, and just for my own part, I actually think looking at them as a package and and starting right now, as Nathan was saying, with the long-term work of finding really the right fit for the town, for a town administrator, while at the same time finding an interim that can step in, you know, in April for at least a week or so of overlap with Tim, I think we need to be pursuing both at the same time. And my reading of the proposal from, the, the original proposal from Municipal Resources is that that's pretty standard, that's a pretty common practice as a way to approach it. Yeah, let me just fill folks in on the what happened with Municipal Resources, so they sent me a letter and copied Tim on it yesterday and Alan Gould wrote it, the, the principal, and he said that, you know, considering our, our conversation that, that we had at the select board meeting, and he, and he listed a couple of things that were factors, and I'll, I'll get to that, but he said, he thought that, he says that we feel that Municipal Resources may not be the best partner for you. And then he goes on to give a brief explanation, so one of, one of the reasons, I think, and I'm not going to read the whole thing, but he talks about how that they felt, they feel pretty strongly that the trying to hire a one-year interim town administrator is very difficult to do, and they didn't, and they, they felt like they didn't have much chance at the presentation to really make the case about that. But he, he thought it, we were, we were making it a lot more complex to find someone to do that by making it a year. And for some of the reasons that Tim mentioned, in terms of typically it's a, someone who's already retired and they have limits on how many hours a year they can, they can work and be paid, so. And then he also mentioned that, you know, it was pretty clear from our conversation that we, as a select board, weren't clear about exactly, you know, what we were looking for now or in the future, and so, you know, as we all discussed at the meeting too, we agreed that we needed to to be in agreement as a board first before we could go ahead and, and hire a search firm. And lastly, he did say that, you know, he talked about the comments that were made at the meeting last week about concerns about the work they'd done previously for the town and I, I, again, I'm, I'm happy to share this letter with folks if you want to see more details, but that was another reason, he said that he thought perhaps, you know, this wasn't the right time for them to be working with us, but he, at the end, he says, we believe Carlisle is a great community and we wish you all the best as you move forward with your hiring and selection process. So I wrote him back, just a very short, you know, thank you for your letter and appreciate your, you know, candor and, and, and straightforward response and and then indicated that we were meeting, in fact, tonight to figure out exactly what we thought made sense for the town administrator role. And that we'd certainly, if we thought we would like to use their services, we'd certainly get back to them. And so that's where that stands, and Tim, do you want to mention just how the, legally how it works now in terms of considering the other firm?
Well, since MRI was the low proposer in response to RFQ, because they did withdraw, we can legitimately go to the number two proposer on the list, Community Paradigm was the other company, and we could, can go to them and see if we can reach an agreement with them on the scope of services and and, and take it from there. And another thing I should have pointed out, I don't know if I did in my memo, but an interim doesn't have to work a full-time schedule. In fact, a lot of these, you know, managers who might be retired, they, they work maybe three days a week or somewhere, especially if they're traveling a long distance, so it, it could be, you know, as many or as few hours per week as the board, as the board was interested in, and, and obviously, you know, the, the fewer days, I mean, the longer they would be able to commit to a, an arrangement, you know, if, if they're up against a limit. And so I would think the limit is 1,200 hours per year actually for retirees, so they can't work a full-time schedule for an entire year, but you know, they could work a half-time schedule, obviously, pretty much for that length of time.
And Tim, in your experience, if we were, when, when we hired an interim administrator, are you typically, would we be signing a contract with that person for a specific amount of time? A specific duration, or is it possible to write something that's a little more open-ended?
I, I, yeah, I think it's probably, I'm not certain, but probably for a minimum number of months renewable, you know, so it could be for two or three months and you just renew it as needed going forward, so you wouldn't have to commit to eight months or a year if you didn't need that, that amount of service.
Okay. So I, I'm, I think it sounds like we're, am I right in reading that we are in agreement about definitely getting an interim administrator and that, that does not need to be, if, if it's, if we can do what Tim's describing, which is, you know, contracted for a certain amount of months, but with the flexibility of renew that, do we want to go ahead with that? And at the same time, start the process for finding a permanent town administrator, which we know will in all likelihood take longer? And that we'd like to start that process now because it takes a long time?
And can we get community in here so we can interview them in our next meeting?
Yeah, and David and, and Tim and I talked about that yesterday when we planned out the February 12th agenda, so if, if Kate, you and Nathan are in agreement with that, we would arrange to have them come and we could see their, the, their proposal that they provided to Tim. We could get that this week, you know, in our packets to look at in advance.
Tim, have they confirmed their availability?
They, they have not yet, I reached out to them, but I have not connected with them.
We can always have a special meeting to meet with them.
Yeah. Yeah. But that's, all right, so it sounds like we're in agreement that we want to meet with them as soon as we can, and if we can make it next Tuesday, great, and if we can't, we'll schedule something extra.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Um, so.
Next Tuesday, isn't?
It's our regular meeting, next year.
Okay, I, I'm sorry, I thought the 12th was mentioned, okay. So it's the eight.
The eight, yep.
Yeah, tonight's an extra one, yeah. All right, so then we're in agreement, I don't think we need to take a vote on this, we're, but we're, the four of us are in agreement that that's how we want to move ahead, we want to pursue both the interim and a permanent town administrator. And if we can do that through one firm, great, we'll know more, once we have a chance to talk to Community Paradigm. And that, Tim, by the way, that's the way, that's the way their proposal came in, they're, they were including doing both for us?
Yes, yep.
Yeah, good, so we'll see that in their proposal, okay. Well, good. So we've got five minutes, probably before your timer went off, Kate.
Yeah, it is, I, I, I can safely turn it off now, is that what you're telling me?
Yes. And I see both, I see Madeline is on the call, so hi, Madeline, I am happy to.
Hi Barney.
Hi there, turn the gavel over to you as the planning board chair and we've already, you know, started our meeting, so we're good to go.
Okay, but we just, we need to wait for the rest of the planning board members.
Yeah, and I know, we've got four minutes till it's seven o'clock, so. Great. So Kate, you can turn off your video and go, you know, quickly get something.
Yeah, thank you.
Barney, are you still, do you guys still have to continue in session after the master plan part of the meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we're gonna, we'll stay on the call after you end the joint meeting and then we're going to go into executive session.
I'm gonna, I think I'm gonna mention when we get started to try to keep this, all of us jointly to one and a half hours and stop at 8:30, just so, to set expectations, does that work for your timing?
Yeah, that'd be great.
I mean, there's, there's going to be plenty of other chances to talk about this and deliver comments.
Yeah, yeah. Sounds good.
Hi Jack, hi Alexis, hi all, hi Jude.
Hey.
Hey Bob.
Hey, I want you to know that my husband came over about 40 minutes ago and said, I just got invited to the joint meeting tonight to hear the master plan presentation. He said, and I might just join. I said, great.
At least you didn't say, no, I'd prefer if you didn't come. Well, Tim's catching up with people at the door here.
Yeah.
And once Tim gets along, I don't know Alexis, if you mentioned to Tim about sharing the screen so you could have the ability to show the slides?
I did not, but it looks like I have access when the time comes.
Oh, great, thank you.
Be able to share it, yep.
Thanks, Tim.
Sure.
Thank you, Tim.
Sounds like it's seven o'clock.
Yeah. Tim is in the, in the bell tower. So Madeline, I'm going to take my cues from you, assuming you are taking the master of ceremonies role here.
I am, I just want to wait another minute, I don't think we have enough planning board members yet to have a quorum.
Okay, absolutely.
I saw, I've seen Sarah and Addie.
I'm here as well, Madeline.
Oh, hi Rob, how are you? I guess we have four people then. So I guess we can get started. Everyone, welcome to this joint meeting of the planning board, the select board and the master plan committee. And the main purpose of this joint meeting is to receive a presentation of the eagerly awaited draft master plan report. I'm going to officially call the planning board meeting here to order, I think the select board has already been meeting, so they're already convened. Barney and I had a coin toss before the meeting and I'm going to be chairing this meeting. Barney and I had a coin toss before the meeting and I'm going to be chairing this meeting. Barney will be required to kick a field goal afterwards. And I'm going to proceed informally and not ask for a vote to be made to the chair. I don't think we're going to be taking any votes tonight. Most of the evening will be devoted to the presentation that Jack and Alexis have put together. Um, we'd also like to have an opportunity to hear preliminary comments and questions from the select board and planning board members. Keep in mind, um, that there will be other dates and times to offer comments for this, um, for the planning board. It will at least be February 28th and March 14th and additional meeting dates if we need them. But I'd like to try to wrap this up by 8:30 if we can, if, if a discussion isn't going to be cut in the middle or cut too short in view of the select board having to continue on with other business later on tonight. And it's, it looked like there's a, um, a good turnout from the public tonight, which is great. Um, it's, it's really nice of all of you guys to come out. Tonight, we didn't plan to solicit comments or receive input from the public yet. I don't think you guys have had a chance to see the report yet, and this is meant to be a kickoff. But rest assured, there's going to be lots of opportunity for everyone to weigh in and we all very much want your feedback and your comments. So with that, um, I, before we, before I turn to Jack and before we get started, there's one thing that I do want to do. I would like to extend a very large and very sincere thanks to all the members of the master plan steering committee, both past and present. This was a difficult and challenging project to begin with and made immeasurably more difficult by the fact that a pandemic happened right in the middle of it. We're all used to saying that, you know, the pandemic made things more difficult and more challenging. But I think it was uniquely challenging to try to focus on long-term planning um, and looking into the future when we were in the middle of such a disruptive event. So I really commend you guys for the stick-to-it-iveness, for plugging away, for, for working so hard on this for so long and for getting it done. Um, your draft report is very, very well done and this will provide an immense service to the town. And I actually, if you guys will just indulge me a minute longer, I wanted to thank you guys by name. I think we often say thank you to a committee, but I think this is a little bit more, this is a little bit in chronological order, so it's not most important people first or anything, although I do want to start with Jan Corneal. I'm not, I didn't see her on the call, so I'm not sure if she's here. But our heartfelt thanks to Jan for literally five years of work on this project and for being the animating spirit of it for a really long time. I also want to mention Pete Gambino, who's my predecessor as planning board chair. And he had a lot to do with getting, I mean, he was the one that got this going and got it off the ground. He's moved out of town, but we owe him a debt of gratitude too. I'd like to thank, um, Mark Levitan, Lana Zamaro, Jessica Nuremberg, Randy Brown and Brian Cruz, who were involved early on. I have to mention Debbie Bentley separately because Debbie, I didn't realize until I looked back at the early materials that you were initially on the committee. And then you went off and then you were, I don't know what to say, dedicated enough, misguided enough to come back at the end when, um, they needed some help to get it over the finish line. And I also, I think would be remiss if I didn't mention Carrie Kissinger, especially besides Jan. Carrie is the one person who was on this committee from beginning to end, the whole five years. His financial model was, is a, is a great asset for the town. Um, but more importantly, Carrie, I think you're a role model to all of us for how you conduct yourself on a committee. It never gets personal. It's always graceful. It's always respectful and you bring, you brought a ten to this committee. Coming forward into 2019, there was Ruth Clampton and Tanya White, Jason Maltin and Stacy Lennon is another person. Maybe some of, some of you made a big impression on me because you happened to be on the committee at the time I was there. But Stacy was a real driver of this too. She did a great job. John Valentine and Bob Zog. You guys combined have this like analytical ability to always bring the discussion back to a relevant place and move things forward and tons of analytical work. And research that was, that is a big part of this. Lynn Lepinski, um, I, I think most people know she and her company donated their survey services for the two most recent master plan surveys, which allowed those surveys to be conducted in a technical and competent manner that I probably would not have been achieved without that software and that assistance. Eva Mustafi and Angie Verge were also on the committee in the 2019, 2020 timeframe. And I want to stop a minute here with Barney Arnold and Kate Reed, um, both of who joined after this was already underway. And on behalf of the whole planning board, I really want to thank you guys for how you threw yourself into this. It really helped the project to have leadership from the select board that was with your actions and not just your words. And we all recognize that. Jack, Jack, um, Jack was willing to take over the chair of this project, um, when it was well underway. And it was, it's a difficult thing to come into a project that's, that's halfway done, that's had some challenges. And to be willing to step into that, that role and carry it through to the end, you've done a great job, Jack. And I, I know some of us talked to you before you decided to take the role about some of the difficulties that you might face. We probably, and I think you were well aware of what some of the challenges would be, but I think looking back on it, you'd probably say they were even greater than, than you realized, but you've done a great job and a real professional job of managing this. Mary Lynn Bond, Nancy West, Christine Lear and Christina Kristolopoulos. Came in a little bit more towards the end, but you guys have been awesome. I think most of you, all of you have been part of the outreach team, which has been a real stellar part of this last year's work. There's been great outreach and a ton of visibility. And you guys made great contributions to this, this, um, project as well. If I forgot anyone, I'm really sorry. I didn't mean to, but from, from the planning board and I'll speak for the select board too. Thank you very much. And with that, I'll turn it over to you, Jack.
Well, thank you so much for that, Madeline. And I, I, I'm now convinced that you could easily do the acceptance speech for an Oscar because, you know, those are not easy to do and you really did a great job. I appreciate it. And I appreciate your recognizing, you know, the long span of service, uh, to this project. And it's been my pleasure to, you know, work on it. And, and to really be surrounded by a great team of people. So thanks for that. I'm gonna, um, introduce Alexis Lanzalata from Barrett Planning Group. I know a lot of people have met Alexis, but for those of you who have not met her, she has just done an outstanding job, uh, to help support our, our group. And Alexis is gonna help me steer through this presentation. I'll also note that Judy Barrett, principal at Barrett Planning Group is also here. And we appreciate, um, all that you guys have done in support of our, uh, efforts here. So, uh, Alexis, if you, uh, want to share the slides, I'm gonna, there is a slide, uh, coming forward too, I think on the, on the group and I'll just make sure, uh, to, so if we, if we can go to the agenda, just give you a quick, uh, sense of how we're going to go through this. I'm going to make a few more introductions, uh, but it will, it will be brief. Alexis is gonna walk through an organization, uh, of the documents. Um, I'm going to talk about key recommendations and the approach to implementation. We're going to turn back to Alexis to talk a little bit about this proposed plan for public input. And I would just underscore the comment that Madeline made that, you know, this is a process, we're just sort of kicking off into, um, the public. You know, public response and we'll talk more about how that process will go. And, uh, then we'll look forward to, uh, well, I'll give a, I will give, we have been getting feedback and recommendations from boards, committees and commissions. I'll talk a little bit about that and then we'll go to questions and answers. So, um, that's the agenda. And then, um, in terms of the project team, we, I, I just want to highlight again, um, a couple of people. I know Barney and Kate are here. And they've been, as Madeline said, a really, uh, important part of the team. Also on this call are Debbie Bentley, um, Mary Lynn, Boone, Carrie I saw, um, Bob Zog and Christina Kristodoulopoulos, uh, is with us too. So, um, I appreciate everybody supporting us here. It's been a great group and a great team, uh, to work with. And, you know, as you alluded to, Madeline, we don't necessarily always agree on everything, but we have had a really good professional interaction among us all. And I'm very grateful to be part of a, a great team. So, uh, if we can move to the next, uh, slide, Alexis, maybe you could jump in and talk a little bit about how the document is organized.
Sure, sure. Thank you, everybody, for, uh, welcoming us tonight to, uh, talk about the, the draft plan. Um, so I know the members of the planning board and select board have been able to see a, a preliminary draft. And I just wanted to walk you through, uh, just the components of that in case you haven't been able to review all of it just yet. But, um, we started with an executive summary, uh, to, to highlight some of the key recommendations. And, and those recommendations are also going to be what, uh, Jack will be focusing on this evening as well. Uh, the first two chapters really kind of lay out the process for the reader, um, the, the development of this plan over as, as, uh, was mentioned earlier, it's been a long process, uh, so just walking the reader through that. And then the general framework explains the organization of the plan. The next five chapters are centered around the community values that were developed by the master plan steering committee, um, and, uh, we'll talk a bit more about those in a moment. But each chapter kind of describes what the value is, the key drivers behind that value, um, and the goals and recommendations relating to that value. Uh, and then chapter eight brings it all together, uh, as the approach to implementation where all the, uh, recommendations are in one place, uh, talking about, uh, the responsible parties, uh, general timeframes and, and suggestions for how to, uh, see the implementation of this plan through. The appendix, uh, there are still some pieces coming together, but I think the, the heart of it is really the existing conditions reports. These were originally drafted by Civic Moxy and then the committee, uh, continued to revise them and update them. And so those are appendices A through I, and those were also included in your draft. Uh, and then the, the three appendices that are, that we're just wrapping up for you, are on, uh, the, the land use, the GIS tool and the development potential assumptions. Um, an appendix on, uh, preliminary facilities needs assumptions, and then an appendix on the, uh, financial projection model that Madeline referred to earlier, the work really of, uh, Carrie and, uh, John Valentine. Who I'm not sure if he's on this call just yet. He might be joining us, but, so those are the appendices that you'll, you'll get to look forward to soon. Uh, just kind of tidying those up for you. I want to talk a little bit about the master plan elements. That was how this document originally, when it was, uh, coming together, when Civic Moxy drafted the existing conditions, it was done. And the traditional framework, uh, under 81D and the statute that outlines the typical components of a master plan, they're often referred to as master plan elements. And the, the first one you see here, demographics, and then the, um, energy and environmental, uh, sustainability. Those two are actually not listed in the statute explicitly, but it's increasingly common for a lot of communities to include those as well as it's, uh, you know, extremely important in, uh, as communities move forward. And so that's how the existing conditions are structured. Uh, as I mentioned previously, the master plan steering committee developed these community values that kind of framed the plan. And so, uh, we worked to organize the, the key takeaways that were developed through these existing conditions analyses and kind of filter them through these community values. So the five values, uh, Carlisle character, fiscal sustainability, connectivity and access, environmental stewardship and caring community, those values, uh, we, um, surveyed the community in the summer to just kind of, uh, after really looking at all of the community input that the committee had worked so hard on for so long, these were the values they determined. And, uh, so we designed the survey to just assess whether the committee's understanding of, uh, the community vision and values was, was on point and the draft goals at the time. And, um, the committee felt from the response on that survey that, that these were in fact the values to carry through in the plan. So, um, there are a total of 24 goals, uh, through each of those five values. And, uh, the, uh, recommendations scattered throughout each as well. And this gets explained a bit more in that chapter three, the plan framework. But each of the values, uh, the reader is directed to the appropriate existing conditions reports where they could learn a little bit more about the, uh, specific data and background information relating to that. So I'm going to turn it back over to Jack to talk about those key recommendations, um, and, and we'll go from there. So Jack, just let me know when you need me to advance slides.
Okay, great. So as Alexis mentioned, you know, there's 86 recommendations that are all laid out under these 24 goals and, uh, respective values. And what we really wanted to do and, and hopefully communicated in the executive summary was to focus on and highlight, uh, four themes rather, to highlight the key recommendations. And, and those, uh, focus areas are coordinated land use planning and policy development, the need for coordinated fiscal planning, uh, the need for coordinated facilities planning, and then the importance of planning for environmental sustainability. So I'm going to talk about, uh, 13 of the recommendations that fall under these, that we wanted to really emphasize for, uh, the community and for the, for the respective boards, the planning board and the board of selectmen. So, um, I'm gonna basically walk through these and then I'm going to talk about, several other recommendations that are really important means to support, uh, these key recommendations. So gonna highlight, uh, a few for consideration. So if we can move into, uh, the first of these key recommendations, we really, it became very evident in listening to the feedback that we got from the community that there were a number of competing needs for land planning and, um, you know, that we really needed to balance those and, and they're all important needs. And they relate to open space, facilities, infrastructure, agricultural uses and housing alternatives. And so we, we wanted to make sure that we were getting this recommendation clear. And, uh, so the, uh, committee went out in the, in the fall survey. And we, we did get the majority of respondents in almost all categories to, you know, when asked, you know, for each one of these purposes, uh, do they think it's important for the town to proactively acquire land? You know, this was, this was validated for the most part by the fall survey. So the other, you know, aspect of this, and we can go to the next slide, Alexis is, um, you know, this, this again comes from the, the summer survey. But again, um, large majority of the respondents said that balancing these multiple needs was important or very important. So, um, you know, that was a consistent theme. And so, uh, one other thing to point out, um, from the fall survey is we did receive almost a two-thirds response, uh, in support of the notion for housing diversity. That question, if for those of you took the survey, may recall there was a definition of missing middle housing that speaks to, you know, different types of housing diversity that can be achieved. And, uh, again, that was, uh, supported, um, by almost a two-thirds response. So given, you know, this feedback, which, you know, was two surveys, but it was these kitchen conversations and, and two forum, fora, I guess, or two, two different forums. You know, we, this came out as a really consistent and important, uh, message. So there's four, uh, recommendations that I would like to just, um, highlight. The first is the need to develop comprehensive criteria for evaluating land. And, uh, well, we have applied some of these principles for, for, um, for acquiring open space. The report provides some ideas on how that could be done across this spectrum of different, um, uses of, of land. The second is to, uh, specifically engage the community. The second is to specifically engage the community in developing a conceptual plan for the Banta Davis Mosley Land. It's important, we believe, not to prepare a single site plan on a larger thirty-eight acre site, but to think bigger picture about what the whole site, the whole particular site should look like over, you know, over its future evolution. And some people have ideas that that's already done, and other people see it differently. So we we think that's important. Two other recommendations to highlight related to housing. One is specifically the need to basically support the Affordable Housing Trust and its efforts to ongoing right now, I should point out. Thanks to the efforts of the trust and Kate Reed to develop the housing production plan. But we also think, based on the feedback that we received, that there's a lot of a lot of, I won't say misunderstanding, but you know, there's, there's affordable housing with a capital A, and there's affordable housing with a small a. And we think that, you know, just a broader education on on what this all means is really important in the community. And then I've already sort of mentioned the fourth recommendation, which is regarding these different forms of, you know, possibly different types of housing in this category missile, missing middle, which could be, you know, side-by-side duplex, townhouse. I mean, you've, there are some examples of it in town. And there, there was, is rather, an example with the open space residential cluster. But we think there could be further attention in that area. So those are the coordinated land use and planning recommendations. I'm, I'm now going to move to coordinated fiscal planning. Madeline, you alluded to this and to some of the work that Kerry and John Valentine have been doing. You know, again, we wanted to, thi- this had, this emerged as an early theme. You know, the whole notion of how important is it that taxes remain sustainable? And of course, in the summer survey, that was pretty unanimous. Ninety percent of the respondents felt it was important or very important. So fiscal sustainability is, you know, clearly critical to the town. And then with respect to some specifics, you know, there were, there were a lot of questions about, you know, how could the town possibly reduce costs? And there was nearly two-thirds of the respondents in the fall survey that felt that looking at regional, regionalization and regional options would be something to seriously consider. So the three recommendations I want to, you know, call to your attention. One is this comprehensive financial model that started out as something Kerry began working on, and then John Kerry have been taking it to another level. I know that that they recently met with the FinCom. And this is really the notion of looking out beyond just budget to budget. What kind of financial, you know, what will the costs and the future revenues look like going forward? We know we have a limited and slowly growing revenue base, if you will, it's limited to residential. And and so, you know, this becomes, I think, more and more critical over time. It becomes even more critical if it involves other key components, which we're going to talk about, including debt and and also the notion of planned preventive maintenance. So we're really happy that Kerry and John have already jumped forward and are moving in some informal discussions with the FinCom. The second is to establish, as I mentioned, in in regard to these concepts of interlocal agreements or regionalization. Again, Kerry's done a a fair amount of research on this. And we have done some best practices, you know, review of other towns, and and there's a lot of information in the report and other ideas to share on that. And then the other third recommendation is really just this important role that the Governance Task Force is doing now in looking at the municipal organization and staffing structure to make sure that we not only meet the needs, but but plan again ahead. So I'm going to now move to the third area, which is the need for coordinated facilities planning. This sort of is connected, as I said, and it's connected to clearly the first two, the the land use planning needs and the fiscal planning needs. Again, what we heard in this was that eighty-eight percent of the community in the summer survey thought that long-range planning for public facilities, infrastructure, and other investment decisions was important or very important. And then, you know, rolling forward, as we looked at in the fall survey, again, significant majority feel that planning for preventative maintenance is really critical. And also that the town, when, when we ask specifically about the willingness to fund a study, that number drops down a little bit, still a majority, sixty percent. But obviously, you know, there's twenty-seven percent of the community that wants to know more about how we would go about understanding these long-term facility needs. So let me get into those four recommendations. Oh, let me just stop on this. There's, there's one other thing. Again, I want to call out John Valentine, who I know is teaching a class tonight. But John put together a task force that really dug in to all of the facilities needs. And with, along with Jerry Lerman, who's on the Municipal Facilities Committee. And I, I think Lynn Lipinski was involved and some other folks. And basically, they took a, took a look at the, at the inventory of about one hundred and eighty-five thousand square feet of municipal facilities, the vast majority falls into the public school basket. But for those of you who are familiar, the twenty-seventeen study of deferred maintenance needs shows some significant costs. I would just point out by looking at this that 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 study really only looked at five, four, it didn't technically look at the public school, but only looked at four areas. And then what John and the task force did was speak to other groups and determine that there were unmet space needs. A- a- as I think a lot of people know, the situation with the police and the fire, and and to some degree, the public works. There are also obviously unmet needs in the Town Hall, the Council on Aging, the RecCom, Cultural Council, and and then this whole idea of workforce housing as being integral to the volunteer fire department. So there's a, there's a fair amount of information in the report. It's, it's going to be mostly in the, in the appendix. But I just wanted to point this out. So Alexis, if we can move to the third of the, or to just go over these recommendations with respective facilities. So I really think it's important to develop and maintain a a rolling, long-term facilities plan that looks at all of these municipal facilities and and not just one at a time, or whatever the one is that's the most critical at any given moment, but to think ahead ten, twenty years. Again, that we move from deferred maintenance to planned preventative maintenance. This hasn't been addressed to any great degree in the budget, and we think it's really important. Clearly, we're going to underscore the work of the Public Safety Facilities Task Force, which is ongoing and really critical to this set of recommendations. And then, of course, there is this question of how some of these intergenerational community needs, which we got a lot of feedback on, how they get met? And when will they get met? And will they get met in an independent facility? Will they get met in some existing facilities? Is there some kind of a transition? We think these are important questions. So if we move to the fourth area, as Alexis said, early on, the master plan focused on the importance of planning for environmental sustainability, made this sort of a key pillar to the whole analysis. And I think the next slide shows why. You know, in terms of five environmental stewardship questions, ranging from sustainability practices to carbon reduction, you know, protecting wetlands and measuring, making sure we, we think about climate change. The measure of what's important and very important, very clear, clearly articulated by the respondents in the surveys. And of course, this is very consistent with the feedback that we received in the different kitchen conversations and the forums. So there are two recommendations here. One is really the need for highlighting, you know, a management, very proactive management plan to protect natural resources against ecosystem threats. You know, we heard from a lot of different members of the community, including the agricultural community, about concerns about invasive species and other e- essentially environmental threats. And the other thing to highlight here is the path to zero emissions. You know, the town has really gotten some great volunteer work to achieve more than, more than a good foundation in this. And and we really think it's critical to, to keep that momentum going. So those were the two recommendations for planning for environmental sustainability. So what I'm going to do now is, is talk about several other key recommendations that we think are critical to achieving the thirteen recommendations that I I just mentioned. And of course, these extend to really supporting all of the recommendations. But we realize that this is a master plan for, you know, twenty, twenty-five years. And, you know, we're not going to be advocating that the town try to tackle and bite off on all the recommendations at once. But the reason we're highlighting several of these are because we think the the focus ought to be more, more urgent. And in order to support really the whole master planning effort, but in particular, these recommendations, I just want to go over a couple of ones that we highlighted in the executive summary and in the report. So if you move to the next slide, thanks, Alexis. There's really five recommendations that we think are important in terms of additional tools. And they relate to enhancing the staff capacity in town and also the volunteer capacity. So I'll just go through these. We really think that the effort to do more effective long-range planning would be aided in in a really immense way by hiring a town planner or a similar position. We think that's really critical going forward. In terms of how we move from this effort and to continue on this master planning endeavor, we think that a master plan implementation committee that is really comprised of members of existing boards, committees, you know, that are touching all these different areas, is, is the vehicle on the volunteer level. In terms of the environmental sustainability, fifteen A, the idea of having professional support at this point in terms of pushing forward the agenda on environmental stewardship and sustainability is just really important. And as I said earlier, you know, the volunteer work that's been done on various committees has, I think, teed up an opportunity here. And so we really think that that's something to to put first and, you know, upfront in recommendations. And then also in tandem with that is an environmental stewardship volunteer committee that would work work in terms of how to, again, make these transitions from all the work that's been done. And and how do we, how do we move the agenda forward? And a similar feeling with regard to the housing initiatives. You know, the town does a great job of I, I, I'm, I'm every day so impressed with the, the work of the volunteers in Carlisle. But I think there's a limit to how much volunteers can do. And and we do think that there are some key, key staffing needs. And we're not suggesting that these are all new people all at once. But we do think they are staffing support needs that should be considered sooner rather than later. And if we move to the next, in terms of the technology, really want to mention that the GIS and and a strong endorsement for the town, which I think is, is sort of moving ahead, or not sort of. I think it's really moving ahead. And, you know, from what we could, wha- what we could achieve by building a GIS platform, which we're happy to to, to, you know, extend further from a prototype to a, you know, fully integrated municipal resource. We really think this tool is something that its time is, is right now for Carlisle and really critical. And then just in terms of the whole community, I think a technology strategy is really important to support the community. And so we, we really wanted to underscore that because a lot of the feedback that we received on connectivity and access was, was less. I mean, we did get a fair amount about pathways and brick and mortar. But this whole idea of how to communicate between the Town Hall and and the community and how the town could more effectively use technology came across as a pretty important need. and how the town could more effectively use technology came across as a pretty important need. So those are the four themes that I wanted to highlight. Key recommendations, as I said, there's 13 of them. And and then these seven recommendations on how to essentially roll forward in this process. So if we if we can just talk briefly about the approach to implementation, which I alluded to, the master plans steering committee is going to continue to work with the planning board as Madeline suggested. And we're going to move and Alex is going to talk a little bit more about how we roll this forward to completion in the next few weeks and and then ultimately to adoption. And then we're also suggesting not to wait and that it would be beneficial for the select board to begin the process of appointing a master plan implementation committee. So we think those activities could run concurrently and we would would recommend that. So that so I would, I'm just going to let Alexis jump back in and talk about what this looks like more specifically in terms of where we go from here and and how we get public input.
There we go. Okay, thank you, Jack. Yeah, I'm just going to briefly talk about what the outreach team decided to to do to kind of solicit public input on the draft when it when it goes live. And so the plan right now is that the draft plan will be posted for 30 days with a link to provide feedback. And so that link will just ask the respondent whether they are responding as a representative of a group or as a private citizen and resident or a staff member. So just asking, you know, in on in what role are you providing this feedback? And then just a no character limit window for providing said feedback. And then the outreach team will compile that input, synthesize it for the MPSC to review and consider changes to the plan before turning back around a a plan for the planning board to consider for acceptance. So that is how the the public input will be collected. But of course, we welcome feedback from the planning board and select board on their thoughts on that as well. And then, Madeline, I know you mentioned this, this will overlap with, you had mentioned that the February meeting of the planning board. You also were planning on collecting, using that for for further questioning about the master plan, which I think is great and that so that will overlap coincide with that period of that form being live. Jack is going to talk a little bit about some of the input that was received already. So the in the end of December, Jack had let boards and committees know that the draft recommendations would be coming out in early January and to kind of put a placeholder on their agendas. And so he's going to talk a little bit about some of the feedback that we received and what's been incorporated and what the committee still needs to review and may want to wait to see what the rest of the public input says. So Jack.
That's right. So so far, we've received feedback, some of it's preliminary and some of it is based on a full meeting of the organization. But so far, we've received feedback from seven of the boards and committees. We have, as Alexis indicated, we've addressed some of these comments in particular. You know, so just to be clear, back in the beginning of January, we just provided those boards and committees, the recommendations, which is just a piece of the of the report. And so we're asking them to comment on the recommendations. Once the report goes up, which I said, hopefully will be within the next two weeks, we will be ahead of that time reconnecting with the boards and committees, advising them that the entire report, you know, is posted up, providing them a link. And then, you know, in that public comment period, we're expecting that we will receive more comments from the various boards and committees. So it's a process that started already and it will continue after this meeting and into this process, Madeline, that, as you suggested, as we head into trying to come up with the final report. So I think that brings us through the report, hopefully. We covered enough ground, at least I think, probably a good to good point to break for questions and appreciate everyone's patience letting us roll through that.
Thank you very much, Jack and Alexis. Why don't we just handle this informally? I we'd love to hear from any select board or planning board members that have a question or a comment.
I'll start by thanking Jack and the committee and the planning board. I mean, very thorough job, you know, there's a lot of data in there. I've I've read some of it. I can't say I've read all 236 pages at this point, but you know, a lot of good work. So I I echo what was said earlier for everybody working hard. And, you know, obviously, what what stands out is, as Jack mentioned, is the need for implementation to turn those broad recommendations into specific action items that we can do. So, you know, I look forward to that step in the process. And my comment, I guess, just generally is guidance for, I know the planning board is going to take it up with the master planning steering committee and gather feedback. So is just, you know, if everything's important, nothing's important. So we we have to really take a fine, a sharp, you know, view at trade offs and priorities, for example. I noticed in one of the slides, Jack, you know, there's a need for more professional staff, which I certainly agree with. But that runs counter to, you know, the need for fiscal sustainability. And those are the kind of trade offs that I presume the it's great to have the data, you know, to get everyone's preferences in a form that we can easily see. So that's great. But all the action happens at the margins, right? When you have to trade A with B. And that's the point I imagine you can comment that the implementation committee will have to grapple with.
I think that's a great point, David, and I appreciate that. And upfront, you know, we we laid out, I think it was five or six questions, which are really, as you said, trying to make a decision on what does Carlisle want to do and how can it do it? And I would just emphasize that I I hope people think of this as a process because it it's really, we tried to lay it out that way so that we can proceed in such a way that the town can really, you know, balance these priorities. And 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 the way that the town thinks about something today could be different from the way it thinks about it next year or five years from now. And so it's just sort of a a consistent review that I think is going to be important.
Madeline, if I may, this is
Go ahead.
Okay. So, you know, I I agree absolutely, a great job, you know, kudos to everybody. This is a really, really great report. I have a couple of questions on kind of one of the earlier slides. One of the the things, one of the items was putting together a plan for Banta Davis and the Mosley property. I'm wondering if it makes, I'm wondering if there was any discussion about expanding that to any other either currently town owned property or looking at potentially what other property the town might consider purchasing and incorporating that into that kind of a plan as well, rather than just targeting that one property, which is going to kind of limit what we can do versus what other properties might be within a period, you know, within an area that might come for sale that we might want to purchase and figure out how, you know, how if that was to happen, how we might be able to incorporate that. So that's one question. And on the same slide, I was just hoping you could give a little bit more definition between the what the Affordable Housing Trust would be doing and this middle housing and kind of a little bit more definition around those two things. I'm a little confused as to what what those are.
Great. Well, thanks for those questions, Nathan. I'll I'm going to take the first question and start by saying that for those of you who know, the town, you know, has substantially more than the 38 acres of Banta. It's, there's both a history and and some apparent limitations so that while we may have about 120, 115 acres, vast portion of the Conant land is challenging to consider. You know, arguably, there there is some of it that could be used. But from past exercises of of trying to look at the Conant land, I think it's it's fairly limited due to combination of wetlands and and, you know, serious ledge conditions. I I would also point out in terms of your question about where where it goes forward, there will be, and Alexis mentioned, there's, there's two. There's a couple of appendices, three that will be included. One of them is going to show developable and underdeveloped land, both public publicly owned and privately owned. And it's sort of built off the the OSRP and it will show, you know, where that land is. But we don't want to presume that in particular privately owned land, you know, can be obtained by the town. We we tried to stay away from, you know, making any specific parcel recommendations. That's generally not what a master plan does. But clearly, you know, there's, as I said, there's, there's 100 20 constrained acres owned by the town, the 38 acres on the Mosley Band to track being the most easily developed. And then there is somewhere on the order of maybe another thousand acres of, you know, underdeveloped land that's privately owned. So yeah, there's definitely land in Carlisle. But again, it's a question of, you know, what land is the most suitable for future open space? What could be conducive for uses for municipal purposes? And so on. And not not everything is the perfect fit, obviously.
Right. And I was I was actually thinking mostly about municipal purposes and understand the limitations around the Conant land. And you know, I just worry that, and I totally know that we can't just decide, hey, you know, we're we're going to go after this piece of property. But if we were to identify those that might be really useful for municipal property, we could be prepared. If if something comes up, rather than right now, I just don't think there's any way we can move fast enough. If anything comes available. And so just being, you know, like prioritizing those those parcels and understanding like if it were to happen, what might we do with it? And 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 where might the funds come from? But yeah, I get all the limitations that you that you mentioned.
Right. And I think that question is spot on, Nathan, with the suggestion of the recommendation for D, which is, you know, to definitely plan ahead with these criteria for, you know, what the town should do. And and quite frankly, to tie it together with the whole notion of, you know, where will the resources come from? You know, typically, the town has sort of seen an opportunity and then structured a an approach and done a great job, in my opinion. But we're sort of suggesting something along the lines of what you are, which is develop these criteria. You know, identify how those resources might be obtained, your combination of, you know, town cat, you know, cash, debt, whatever. And then, you know, be be prepared and be proactive.
Yeah, yeah, I think that 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 sounds great. I'm because I worry that, you know, a person will come up and we'll just kind of go all out on it. But it actually wouldn't have been the priority. And then the next one comes in. Now we can't do it because we hadn't prioritized them.
Well, which is a little bit too why we made the recommendation, at least on Banta, because we we do have some concern about thinking beyond just, you know, one parcel at a time. And, you know, we just think that's important. But I'm going to, I'm going to, so that I'm not the only one speaking. Let Alexis take apart your question on the housing, you if you would like to Alexis about the the two, the distinction between the Affordable Housing Trust and
Jack, before you go to that, just I want just want to add a comment to Nathan's and your dialogue. I think it's great, you know, if we have a priority, then to Nathan's point or your point, we'll know whether a particular opportunity ranks high or low on our, you know, list of sort of priorities. But I don't want people to have, you know, unrealistic expectations about the pace of the town. And Kate, maybe you should chime in, but the the fundamental mechanics of amassing enough money to act on an opportunity outside of, you know, the ponderous sort of special town meeting, town meeting, vote, you know. I don't know if that's something we're prepared to embrace. We don't really have a mech, a fast track mechanism. And and I want to make sure that we're clear on that. So it would give us a priority lens, but it doesn't necessarily speed up the actual process of acting on an opportunity. Kate, do you want to say anything to that if you're there?
I my sorry, my internet's a little wonky, so I'm keeping my camera off it so I can hear you guys. I I think there's an Alexis will can chime in, and I think she really should be properly answering the question. There is a a recommendation in there to do almost exactly what Nathan was talking about, doing the criterias and maybe even an RFP and, you know, basically doing an OSRP for municipal, other municipal needs. So.
So what I I I really appreciate the comment about looking beyond Banta. And we actually, as a committee, talked about that the at the last meeting where that that precisely was discussed. Is there too much focus on this one parcel? And we did expand the narrative a bit on that recommendation to talk about what, you know, after that, Banta is kind of the logical place to look right now as conversations continue to surround that that parcel. And then, you know, as Jack mentioned with with Conan, you know, I know this was years ago, but at some point, there was at least a portion of Conan that was identified to be where where I think at the time it was housing could have been cited. So there must have been some feasibility done to determine that precise part of Conan that could potentially have something done on it. So so what we did, we added a little bit to the narrative on that recommendation to say the town could then look to do something similar beyond beyond Banta Davis. It just seems that that is such a priority parcel right now that it would it almost seems like a missed opportunity to not really focus doing some conceptual exploration of that area in terms of looking at acquiring other land. So there are a couple of recommendations that were previously in the plan that we kind of tried to consolidate a bit where the 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 first step is really to develop that comprehensive criteria. And I really think the town of Dennis did a great job of that. We talked about that example in in the plan and I'm happy to to share that the plan with anybody who wants to look. Now their motivation for doing it was a little bit different because they were actually looking at a lot of tax title properties and trying to make decisions about what it should be used for, or whether they should hang on to it for further review or try and sell it. So it's a little bit of a different purpose. But the but, you know, in talking with their town planner, the 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 thought is that now that they've kind of gone through that process of developing those criteria, they can be used for the same thing for if if a parcel becomes available, whether it's like a 61A, 61B, the the town can go to those criteria and that that process, it's already been developed and kind of go through it and see what the best use of of that land could be, or if it can be have multiple uses. And as Kate mentioned, kind of rolling in with that. Now, often when I've seen towns And as Kate mentioned, kind of rolling in with that. Now, often when I've seen towns put out an RFP for to acquire property. And Judy can speak to this a little bit too, but it's that's usually for a specific purpose. So that would be if the town is, you know, in one example, if if the community is looking specifically to acquire land, for example, to develop affordable housing, the Affordable Housing Trust might put out an RFP or something like that. So a lot of times when you see that model done for acquiring land, it is with a specific purpose in mind, whereas at least having the criteria ready means when when a property becomes available for the town to be able to act quickly, you can at least go to town meeting or whatever mechanism you need to and say, okay, this this property, we've looked at it through this lens, this lens, this lens, we think it's it's suitable for such and such a purpose. And and you bring it to a special town meeting vote. I think, and you know, Judy, you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but when it's specific to housing, there's a little bit of an easier path if the Affordable Housing Trust has funds to be able to act on it. But in terms of acquiring property for other municipal uses, I I my assumption is that it would have to be a special town meeting vote.
Yeah.
But you at least are prepared if you have done the criteria and the the background process of having different groups look at a parcel and weigh in on it, which is exactly what Dennis did.
Yeah, I mean, you still need an appropriation. You know, a couple of towns have done like bond authorizations in anticipation of acquiring land. I can think of at least one community that sort of keeps money aside for for securing, you know, rights of first refusal or for entering into a PNS, understanding that they still have to go to town meeting. But there's a little money set aside to be able to act with so that perhaps if property is available, you don't lose it. But ultimately, for general municipal purposes, it's an RFP with criteria, site selection and a town meeting. There's not, there's not an easy way to expedite that.
And and you know, and 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 Judy, there probably shouldn't be, right? I mean, it's it's unfortunate, let's say, if, you know, the town can't act fast enough compared with a private buyer to acquire a parcel because of those mechanics. But I so I think it 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 self selects to the sellers, and we have a number of them over the past few years I can think of, who are biased toward holding, being patient and waiting out the town process because they believe, you know, in a greater good that would be served by the town purchasing the property as compared with a private buyer. If somebody has a pure commercial interest at heart, you know, there's not much we can do, and there's probably not much we should do because, as you point out, you know, it's not really, we're acting beyond our authority to kind of commit, you know, this is Carlisle, right? So a given parcel, even a single house parcel is hundreds of thousands of dollars. And and maybe isn't the right thing to just have that money and be able to deploy it without a due process. Like, I kind of agree with that.
I just think if if we know what our priorities are, if we know what it might use it for, that that does make the process shorter.
I agree.
It makes us less reactive.
That's a definite process improvement that we can enact.
We can do.
Yeah, especially in situations where we have the right of first refusal as well, right?
Yeah, the writer first refusal does kind of change the dynamic a little bit, but just a little aside, Nantucket, I I grant you, this is not for general corporate purposes, but it could certainly be done that way. Nantucket has a rope, just a rotating RFP out every couple of months, they reissue it looking for land for housing purposes, for, you know, other municipal needs. So they don't have to put out an RFP and whip it together and, you know, spend weeks on consensus on it. It's just an RFP. They state their criteria and it's out there. So if someone is ready to kind of wants to sell their land, but they have a community minded spirit, at least the procurement process is is easy. That one's already in place. You don't have to spend time on that.
But do but Judy, do they have to then do an STM? So I'm a seller in Nantucket. I respond to the RFP, so I have to do the STM, right?
Oh, absolutely. Because you have to have the money to actually buy the land. I'm just saying that the procurement piece also chews up time. So they've decided to handle that by just having a a running RFP and they reissue it every couple of months and it's, you know, stays open until proposals are received. And it was sort of a device that they came up with with their procurement officer because the town was having such trouble getting land for purposes that Nantucket wanted to serve, which in that case happened to be housing, but you could do it for anything.
I I think, too, it's important to note that when the town, when this is obviously some time ago, when the cost of land was less, but the town acquired thirty eight acres. The Banta tract, it didn't have a specific use for all thirty eight acres at the time. It was thinking ahead as to, you know, multiple opportunities. Now, I realize it's a lot harder to do that in today's market, but you know, that that was acquiring land and thinking ahead, how are we going to use this land? You know, twenty years from now, thirty years from now. Anyway, Alexis, do you want to quickly address Nathan's question about the, just to parse apart the nuances between the Affordable Housing Trust recommendation and the and the and the housing diversity recommendation?
Missing middle.
Do you want me to take this one, Alexis?
Sure. So, yeah, you can you can go ahead.
I just want to make sure I understand what the question is. Is the question what affordability means for the housing trust? Or can you just maybe amplify a little bit? What is that you're asking?
Yeah, so well, there there were recommendations around the Affordable Housing Trust.
Yes.
And then the next bullet was middle housing. And I was just wondering, are those mutually exclusive or, you know, you know, why, why, you know, why, why two bullets? And, you know, a little bit more about that.
I I can answer the first part there, just in terms of the difference between the the wording on the two. So the the first recommendation was specific to we tried to pull out recommendations that related to developing more solid implementation plans for specific initiatives. So, for example, there was a recommendation about environmental stewardship and and developing a more detailed implementation plan for to follow the path to zero emissions. And so the recommendation about the Affordable Housing Trust was specific to strengthening the trust by supporting them and developing a strategic plan that would lay out their initiatives, their their goals, and, you know, their plans for the next, say, five years, the way any strategic plan would look. So that that was specific to strengthening your Affordable Housing Trust, which relates to, you know, all all sorts of land use, you know, as we were just talking about in terms of acquiring land, for example, if your affordable housing trust is supported and and has funds to work with, they could say acquire land for affordable housing. So that was specific to strengthening the trust. The the recommendation below it was more specific to zoning and other policy changes for missing middle housing, which is not necessarily tied to the Affordable Housing Trust. But I am going to let Judy talk a little bit more about the distinguishing between missing middle and how it ties in with the general housing conversation and and affordability.
Yeah, I mean, I would just say missing middle is really a concept that has to do more with form and structure type than pricing. So affordability is it's either a chapter forty B eligible affordability, or it's it's what some communities call attainable housing, which is priced for somewhat higher incomes, not eligible for chapter forty B, but meets a need. Missing middle is a potential tool to address some of those more moderate to middle income needs by by basically creating more units on the land, which therefore means that you've got more units absorbing the cost of the land. But giving choice. So people who may want to live in a unit with some neighbors can do that, and people who don't go buy a single family home. But it's really about form. It's, you know, it's it's the the concept is we've created communities that either have single family homes or big multifamily buildings, and there's nothing in the middle. So, which we traditionally had in our towns. So missing middle is a form concept. It's would you provide more housing choice through smaller two, three, four, six unit structures?
And so it could be something like the the one on East Street where it's now two, like two townhouses, that type of thing, or allowing somebody, you know, changing zoning so that's, you know, maybe it's easier for somebody to put in an apartment so they can get rental income and stay. And it's it's kind of finding those zoning. Okay.
Right. And I would just say on Judy's point that the Woodward project project is at least to form a missile, a missing middle change in the type of housing. It it may not be providing any diversity as to cost, but it is a diverse housing type as to form.
But you do have, I, you know, I think it's really interesting discussion, right? So as they say in the design world, you know, when I was once an architecture student, form follows function, right? So I agree completely that, you know, a different physical structure is a different form. But the reason for the form and why it would resonate is goes back to function, which is the strategic goal. What do we want in affordable with a small A housing? So on one side of the debate, you know, is the big A affordable that we should for social goals, we should make available truly affordable housing, you know, for certain income test participants. And in the middle is kind of a different social goal, which is we should have housing available for firefighters, teachers, police officers, you know, other servants of the or, you know, sit potential employees or possible employees of the town who could not otherwise afford the thing that's on the left hand or the right hand side, I guess, on the right hand side. You know, the the one, the single family, two acre, blah, blah, blah. So so I think they're intertwined and I I, you know, Judy's sort of underplaying it, I think, in that that model, because the the one that says we want, you know, big A affordable, we've gone there, we've kind of rejected it, you know, it's impractical, the the the, okay, so that's one set of a discussion. But there's a very pertinent discussion going on right now about the middle, not the middle in form, but the middle in function, where, you know, these are probably people who, let's say, in the case of a teacher, make a decent, maybe not qualified of big A affordable wage, but can't afford the traditional model of the one family, two acres own, you know, home. And is that a worthy financial goal? You know, and that's a that's a rich debate to have. And then that mechanism of form may fill that gap in a very useful way. So, you know, I applaud that dialogue. I just want to make sure that we frame it correctly.
Thank you.
No, I think that's a great point, Gabe.
Um, we have about fifteen minutes left. I want to make sure if there's anyone else that would like to make a comment, we we have a chance for that. Luke, is there anything you want to add? And then I might pick on a few planning board members?
No, I don't I don't have anything.
Are there any any planning board members who want to make any comments or ask any questions?
Madeline, I'll just comment that I thought it was very interesting that throughout the process of responding through the prior year or so to the development of the of the plan and the the goals and the recommendations that I I felt that housing was was sort of falling lower and lower on the list. And to have this meeting so focused on housing feels encouraging to me as a as an advocate for it myself. And I'm just curious how that came about, whether it was simply perception on our part, because I know we've had some of these conversations, Jack, and others through the planning board meetings about the sense that housing was being kind of getting lost and deep being de-prioritized. So was it just perception or has there been some change in the last few months as we've gotten to the point of having an actual draft plan?
So so I think that's a great question. Eddie, I don't think it's it's come on just at the end. I think there's always been a sense that particularly on the on the housing diversity, you know, getting back to to David's comment about, you know, where you are on that spectrum, I think that the committee has always seen sort of a strong desire and David, you know, pretty well articulated the kinds of people that maybe can't afford to get into the community that are part of the community. I think there's also, particularly from aging residents who want to stay in Carlisle and or parents of families that live in Carlisle, but would would like to live here instead of living in Lexington or or Waldham, having access to housing alternatives. So I think the diversity piece, the so called missing middle, from that perspective, has been consistent. I think there's, to be honest, there's, and David alluded to this too, there's this history. You know, the town has sort of struggled around the big A affordable housing. And I think, you know, I think the fact that the the housing trust is working on a housing production plan and is focused on that, kind of just put the two together in a way that I think just makes it a it just a a more clear distinction. So and 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 in and a really important part of the plan.
Any other planning board members? I have, I actually have a lot of comments, but I'm just spare you guys tonight. I could happily walk out until midnight on this. But I think I'm gonna, I was trying to think what what I wanted to say for one comment. And that is throughout this process, I've thought about it a lot of different ways and what in one of the things you're recommending is that we do more planning. And I think it's incumbent on us to think about the planning that we've done and think about what parts worked well in Carlisle and what parts didn't. I think I I've come to the conclusion myself, at least, that we're so unique and we face so many constraints that planning can't always be carried out the same way here that it can in just about any other town in the Commonwealth. And as we move forward with additional planning, I think it's really important to keep our eye on that and to think about that that concept and and kind of the lessons that we've learned while this is still fresh in all of our minds. And then my question is, have you either the, you know, anyone on the call thought about how we go about forming the implementation committee? I mean, I I assume that it wouldn't be the same members that are on the master plan committee that you guys have kind of like done your sentence and then you're done. But a- anybody have preliminary thoughts about how we get that process rolling?
Well, I'll just kick kick off the response by saying, Madeline, that I agree that we think it should be a distinct, you know, new committee. And that, you know, would it would benefit from the stakeholders, you know, some stakeholders, but I think it would also benefit, as we know, too, from you know, from new you know, fresh perspectives and people coming to town, you know, as well. So kind of a combination of of, you know, new volunteers and volunteers with a, you know, with with good experience to bring to the table.
Yeah, I think that, you know, one thing that, I mean, we haven't gone so far as to detail exactly what groups should should be on the the committee, but, you know, Jack and I have talked about just the the general importance of having representatives from as as many keyboards as as possible, especially, you know, for multiple reasons. One, it's good to have that perspective. But it's also good because they really act as liaisons to where there's a lot of these recommendations where their group may be responsible. And so it just helps facilitate that communication. So I think I think that would be a priority. And personally, I don't think there's any reason to exclude current members if if they were acted as a good bridge on that committee. But I definitely think having new faces, a new active, fresh committee. And we also, when we first started talking about this, went a little bit back and forth about, you know, whether it's under the planning board or the select board and, you know, different communities do it different ways, but a lot of communities do have the master plan implementation committee reporting to the select board. But Jack and I were just recently talking about this, actually, where maybe it would be good where when the kind of annual report on implementation could be done in a similar fashion to tonight, where it's a joint meeting of the planning board and the select board and the master plan implementation committee. And, you know, the plan does recommend stepping stones in between, not just waiting once a year, but in in terms of kind of a formal report that regardless of the appointing body, which I think probably makes sense as the select board, that the planning board should be heavily involved in the process because so many of the recommendations are under your purview anyway.
Just to comment on that implementation committee. I I think also this, the process that we're launching now, you know, for the next thirty days of outreach and encouraging comments back from both boards and committees as well as individuals. We we should think about that, both as helping us figure out if there, you know, things we want to change in the actual plan, but also are there people that show a, you know, particular interest or passion for one, you know, a part of the plan that might be interested in then participating in an implementation committee? You know, one of the things I think we have to sort out is is the implementation committee sort of functioning as kind of a coordinating committee that where you have different existing boards, you know, that are shown as being responsible for a particular recommendation. Well, where they may be the kind of driver, but the implementation committee is you know, providing support, staying in touch with them, understanding what their action steps are and where they should be working in concert with, you know, another committee or board or you know, serving more of that kind of a function rather than the implementation committee being volunteers who actually drive the action steps for a particular recommendation. I don't know if I'm making sense in describing the difference, but I I think that's an important question that I'm not, I'm not totally clear on yet myself.
Right. You're saying oversight versus actually driving the agenda. You know, I I think my my impression would be, it could be a little bit of both, Barney, but certainly the oversight is a critical role. I mean, there's so many functions, as Alexis said, of existing boards and committees that are doing things.
Right.
You know, so in that sense, it's going to be clearly an oversight kind of role.
And and, you know, the other thing that I wanted to say earlier too, but it's relevant here is where when you first began the presentation, you know, there were a number of sort of goals around coordination, just better coordination to facilitate better decision-making. And I think that general recommendation is a really important one for us as a town to kind of figure out how how we, how could we do that better? You know, have with both the particular characteristics of our town and being this, you know, still quite a small community with a heavy reliance on volunteers and yet trying to move, move us into a trying to have a sort of staff that are that are professional staff that can really help drive the the work that the town wants to have done at the same time as retain some of that important sort of community benefit of of having volunteers really involved in a in a very, you know, active way in the town's future. And and I think we're in a little bit of a crossroad, not a little bit. I think I feel that we're at a crossroads as a town where while we, you know, it's probably human nature to resist change, right? We like to have things kind of stay the way they are, like to have control, know what it's, what it, what what things are like in our lives. But I think for our town to be able to stay, to keep some of the qualities that people really like, we have to make that, we have to make that transition. And I see the master plan's emphasis on coordination and more communication really is a very important piece of that.
Right. I think that's a great point, Barney. And we did hear a lot from people, whether it's in written responses or in different forum activities, that that there was a lot of siloed activity in town, which I think is sort of a natural result of sort of a volunteer-driven structure. And so I do think the coordination benefits are something that we really do feel strongly about and and would hope that that would be part of the vision for the implementation committee.
Yeah, I mean, I I agree with all those comments. I think to be, you know, to clarify from my perspective, yes, you know, this is a great, this data gathering and data sifting exercise was really necessary and and incredibly useful to crystallize, you know, where are where are people thinking? And to the degree that it can be used as a mechanism to, and it's not the only mechanism, the select board's been working with the land use boards, and you know, there's a lot going on behind the scenes that encourages breaking down the silos, and we have to continue that. And that is, Jack, I think, definitely a byproduct of the high volunteer nature of the way we were structured. So there's that component. But at the end, okay, you know, I want to, in my mind, anyway, there's eighty eighty-six recommendations and fourteen focal areas and da-da-da, I get confused and all that, but there's a big pile of things. And and I think you're, you guys are hinting at several important things that I think in the long run will inform how we structure and who serves on this implementation committee. One is to make sure that we're aware of all the activities that are already going on, and there are many that are going. And so just fold these recommendations into those ongoing activities. And then there'll be a much bigger group of things that are not going on that the data suggests, you know, should go on, right? And and then we get to really the critical piece, I mentioned it earlier, you know, the trade-offs in terms of, okay, if we are to embrace those, first of all, some prioritization within that needs to occur. And secondly, then there is kind of a, you know, there's an analysis of whether that activity can be served by volunteers, and we know we're all short of volunteers all the time, or adding professional staff or some other resource that costs money. And so all of that has to kind of be baked in. And then at the end of the day, I think it's up to the select board, you know, and the FINGCOM to prioritize those expenditures or those resource allocations. So that doesn't really answer the question, but but I think in my mind, from a process standpoint, I would be encouraged to see, you know, it sounds like the next month, the planning board and the steering committee are going to refine, get some more data, you know, kind of solidify everything that you presented. And I think we probably should convene again and and think about the next phase and to Barney's point and and the others. What kind of cross-section of constituents should participate in implementation? It might not only be volunteers, it may be even town employees. And then, you know, what is their mission? You know, what are they going to be charged with? And how are we going to work all that? And that's, you know, I don't want to presuppose an answer. So I think that's in, that's sort of an interim step that gets us to actually developing a charter for that committee, and that's going to be a very important assignment.
Would agree.
Well, somehow we managed to finish at exactly eight-thirty.
It's a good sign.
Yeah, I I'm going to take that and and go with it and say thank you very much to everyone that was here tonight for the the joint meeting of the master plan committee, the planning board and the steering committee. Planning board, I guess I need to have a motion to adjourn for us.
Madeline, one quick thing first, if you wouldn't mind, just Alexis and Jack, can you explain for those that are on the call on the Zoom, where and when will people have access to the full plan?
Oh, good point, Barney.
And the and the response form?
So probably, I think what Alexis and I discussed today is we're finishing up those couple of appendices that are not included in the draft. They're, they're pretty much done, or at least two of them are done and and one of them is close to being done. And so we'll then pull our committee back together, Barney, the master plan committee. I would expect probably the week after next. And that will be approval of the final report to go live with all of the appendices. I know the version that you have, Alexis is still working with the team to, you know, make the more robust designed plan with illustrations and other things. So it's going to change a little bit, but not in the content, more in the in the graphic realm. The content changes will only be a combination of any of the feedback that we've got thus far from committees and boards. We'll take it up. We'll take that up with the finished product and then hopefully put it live and go into this thirty-day comment period. So mid-February?
Okay, so the thirty days will begin in a, yeah, in a couple of weeks.
Correct.
Okay, that's helpful to know.
And I'd like to invite everyone here that's a member of the public when the planning board discusses this on February twenty-eighth and March fourteenth. We're very happy to have interactive discussions, and that's an additional way to give feedback if anybody wants to attend and listen or contribute or participate on those, and it'll be in the paper, you know, with the times, if that items on the agenda.
Great.
Good.
So with that, could I have a motion from a planning board member to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Rob, and a second. Blake Guy.
Brady Guy.
My sick eye.
All right, that's four of us, and I'm going to call it good. Good night, everyone. Thank you very much, and we'll talk to you soon.
Thank you.